Okay, the time is now six o'clock despite what the clock in the back says. And we will begin this April eleventh, two thousand twenty-four Borough Council meeting with Moment of Silence and Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilor Perry.
Hello, everybody. It's nice to see we have a nice full house tonight. We gotta take pictures of this. But tonight, my moment of silence, or the moment of silence that I want us all to take and think about is for the people of Haiti and what's happening in Haiti. They are, um, the people there being held hostage by gang members. And it's, of course, it's heartbreaking for, for everyone. And, and I know that, you know, right now, not just this country, but countries all around us are going through some pretty bad and rough things. So tonight, I just want you to take a few moments to think about the people there in Haiti because they need our support. Thank you.
I can once again say Madam Secretary, the roll call, please.
Mr. Hicks.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Landis.
Here.
Ms. Mellon.
Here.
Ms. Perry.
Here.
Ms. Ruse.
Here.
Mr. Stube.
Here.
Mayor Schults.
Here.
Mr. Powers.
Here.
Ms. Rivera-Oliveo.
Mr. Powers is being extra, extra loud. His final meeting tonight. I think Dean Conway, did you know this was Mr. Powers' final meeting as a, as a student ambassador? I hear, I hear you could stay till the end. He has, he has a few words to share with, with all of us, if, if you have time. He, he wanted me to promise not to do that, so of course. That's right. I, I never made the promise, so. Uh, we'll begin with an opportunity for citizens and visitors to be heard. Uh, we'll, we'll do that prior to the presentations. Is there anybody here in, in Borough Hall who would like to be heard on any issue of Borough Government? And if not now, um, later in the meeting, there's another opportunity. Buck, if you'd like to step, step forward. Go ahead. Sure. Podium, please.
Hello, my name is Don Ritchie Smith. I call myself Buck. My address is three fifty-eight Street in Carlisle. Um, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to be here. Last night, I went to a, a meeting held by the Borough and the East Side Neighborhood Association. And we talked about the proposed bike routes. And I'm in opposition to it because, um, we already have a bike lane on that street. We have bike lanes throughout the borough. Uh, it's easy to ride a bicycle through this borough. I think we're wasting good travel space by keeping East Street and Bedford Street limited to one-lane traffic. Uh, I think we can improve the flow of our traffic if we, uh, open up East Street and Bedford to two-way traffic, minus the narrow portion of Bedford Street. Uh, I think it's a six-hundred block up to maybe the one-hundred block. But Bedford Street from north to south should be two-way. East Street, the whole length of East Street should be two-way, just like West Street, just like North Street, just like South Street. Bedford Street is just like Pofford Street, Pitt Street, or Louden Street. Um, the Borough even, um, produces a pamphlet of the bike routes. This is an additional one to get you out of town. So, you know, the bike lanes are here. So I just want, hopefully, the council to consider two-way traffic on our streets. I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any, any other public comment here tonight? Do we have anybody by Zoom? Okay. We will jump into, uh, presentations next. And we, we have the fortune in Carlisle to have a number of partners and organizations here. And we're going to hear from a couple of them this evening. Uh, we will begin first with Carlisle Theater. Uh, and then we have Mayor Scott, former Mayor Scott, not quite on Zoom yet, and, and, uh, former Commissioner and, and current School Board Member in South Middleton, Rick Ravino here with us this evening.
Mayor, members of council, thank you very much for the opportunity. I am here representing the Carlisle Theater. Tonight, I am on the board. Uh, I'd like to share, which your, some of you are probably already aware, some exciting news. The theater was awarded a one-point-two-six-million-dollar Redevelopment Assistance Capital Program grant from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. That grant does require a dollar-for-dollar match. We are now, I'm leading the fundraising effort. We're now in the initial phase of seeking lead gifts. The general campaign will probably come in the third quarter of this year, also in the third quarter this year. We're going to celebrate the theater's eighty-fifth anniversary on September twenty-first with a gala, uh, at the theater. So everybody's welcome to attend. The proceeds of that gala will also go towards the, uh, RacP match. Uh, I am personally committing fifty thousand dollars towards that, uh, that match. And in addition to that, we want to create, which is unrelated, but related, we want to create a, an endowment for the theater. And I've committed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards, uh, that endowment. So I'm going to introduce Jim Comitell. Jim is our, uh, current Theater Board President, and he wants to share a piece of information that I think will be interesting to council.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As Rick noted, we need to raise one-point-two-six-million dollars in matching funds. Uh, the matching funds can come from private individuals. They can come from, uh, federal funding. They can come from local funding. The only funding that's excluded from, uh, matching funds for RacP are estate funds. So if, uh, federal funds even flow through a locality or a state, as long as they're coming from federal or local funds, they can be utilized as matching funds. It's important, uh, as we take a look at this, we have to raise six-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars of the one-point-two-six-million in matching funds in order to put a formal proposal to, uh, the state to unlock the funding. Uh, and that's, uh, what our effort is right now, is to get the bigger donors as well as, uh, as Rick had mentioned, the smaller donors during the third quarter. Uh, we really appreciate anything that you can do. We don't have a specific ask right now. Uh, we just wanted to put it in front of you, uh, to let you consider it. And, uh, we'll probably be back with a formal ask, uh, when we can work it out with you. Appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you.
I've heard, which makes a lot of sense, that the Borough would like to align gifts or commitments, uh, with its strategic plan. And, uh, so yesterday, I actually got a copy of the Borough's strategic plan and read it. And I'm very pleased that you put the Carlisle Theater marquee on the cover of the Carlisle, of the, of the plan. So that, that was great. Uh, Carlisle boasts various entertainment recreational opportunities for residents and visitors. I'm just reading from your own strategic clan, plan, vibrant and thriving community, uh, specifically creating a comprehensive economic development plan and advancing initiatives in downtown Carlisle. So I think we're kind of there. I think the theater is an anchor and a hub. Ashley Byers is our theater manager, and she's going to, if, when we're successful, I'll be optimistic, she's going to talk a little bit about what our capabilities will be and how that will even enhance further what the theater can do for the downtown.
Thank you, council, for hearing me this evening. My name is Ashley Byers. I'm the Artistic Director of the Theater, and I'm the Acting Executive of our nonprofit. Just wanted to share a little bit about the heartbeat of our organization and why this funding is so crucial to the staff, the patrons, the community, and the volunteers. We are celebrating our eighty-fifth birthday this May, and the staff and volunteers are so grateful that we're here to see this moment. During the pandemic, it was estimated that seventy percent of all live theater and music theater venues would remain permanently closed post-pandemic. To date, theaters across the country are programming forty percent less shows, live theater, and films than before the pandemic, even though audience numbers are rising and ticket sales are rising. Though the theater did suffer an over seventy-five percent loss during the pandemic, since reopening our doors in two thousand twenty-one, we are really excited to share that we have doubled our bookings for national touring artists. We have grown our live theater programming exponentially. We are back to more than ninety individual film showings a year. We have doubled our K through twelve educational offerings, and we have tripled our requests from the community in suburbs and surrounding areas to rent our space. Our building is not just part of the history of downtown, but a place of community gathering for the people of now. It's the town band. It's Contate Carlisle, intimate weddings, marquee birthdays, Hachi Dog New Years with a massive Hachi Dog dropped from our roof. Uh, it's bunny hops, chamber mixers, Amani festivals, just to name a few. It's an open space where we have started asking everyone in the community, what is your story? Because reconciling with our past will ensure authentic community growth rooted in listening and learning, which is what the arts are about, which is what community is about. For us to continue serving our community and then to enliven our downtown spirit, we must maintain and upgrade our building. We must stay competitive, specifically with upgraded professional lighting and sound to retain artists who often bypass small towns to go to the larger cities, so that people stay and are thriving downtown. We must ensure our building is safe and accessible for all people, regardless of their abilities, to enjoy in the entertainment and to hear their voice on stage. In whatever way you can, whatever way you can, we ask that you help ensure we keep art alive for another eighty-five years in our nine-hundred-and-sixty-four-seat theater as we announce fundraising opportunities. We look forward to continuing having our patrons come downtown to dine, shop, drink, and be a strong community partner in our future. Thank you so much.
Are you applauding for me? Certainly, the county courthouse is a major anchor, as you know, in the downtown during the day. But I would suggest that in the evenings, the theater is, is definitely a downtown anchor. And actually, if we're looking at this picture, if you had X-ray visions and could look through these two buildings, you would be looking at Cafe Bruges. And Ross Morris is here, the, one of the owners of Cafe Bruges, to talk a little bit about what the theater does for, uh, downtown eateries and pubs at night.
Thanks for taking the time to hear all of these fantastic messages. My, uh, history with the theater goes back to nineteen ninety, when it was reincarnated. And, um, we were invited to, uh, run the cafe. We had the first espresso bar cafe in Carlisle, right beside the theater. So we got to witness firsthand what happened during these events. Moving on to Piato on Conference Street, the Italian restaurant, we saw an even greater resurgence of, uh, people, not only locals, but people coming from out of town to these events. The parking garage would fill every night. And, uh, it was truly an economic boom to the town. So I can tell you from that perspective, the theater is very important as, as many of the puzzle pieces of this wonderful borough. So thanks very much.
We're not here tonight with a specific ask. We realize council has to weigh and consider what opportunities there may be. I would just urge, and I know you're considering this, that effectively, any commitment you make is doubled, you know, by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, you know, into the downtown. And that is restricted to the Carlisle Theater. It's the RacP grant, it, you know, goes to the theater. So we appreciate your time tonight. Uh, if anybody wants, uh, to take tours, I'm happy to walk people around the theater. And we just appreciate your consideration. We, we have the, the Theater Board has set twenty, twenty-four, and twenty-five as the years to match, you know, the RacP grant. So you have a little time flexibility there, you know, I'll share with you. Now, can we answer any questions? I realize you have a busy agenda, but, uh, that's really all we have.
Does council have any questions?
I have a question. Um, how much do you intend to raise during, during your gala? What's your, what's your fundraising goal for your gala?
I, I, well, as much as we can get. But I will share you, I'll, I'll share that my understanding was the last time we had the gala, we, we netted in excess of a hundred thousand dollars. So it was quite a productive evening. And again, uh, the Theater Board has passed a resolution authorizing those funds be utilized to match, uh, the RacP grant.
Any other questions?
I have more of a comment or just observation. Um, first of all, I love the theater. Um, I, I grew up in Lewisburg, and, uh, there's the Art Deco Theater there called the Campus Theater. And so I've always enjoyed a, um, historic theater. But I've also been able to see there how, uh, it's been able to get, um, revitalized. Uh, Bucknell ended up purchasing it and, you know, plays films there through the college. Um, and I go see, the one thing that I leave Carlisle for is for shows, like concerts. I'll be going to one after this, actually. But, um, but I've gone to see the shows at the Sherman Theater up in Strautsberg. So, and that's another small historic theater. So I think that, um, uh, for a minute, I did, uh, I was on a, a committee, um, that looked at concerts, uh, here at the theater years ago with, um, I can't remember what called his name. Um, but there's things like that, that I think it's, my, my ask is more of just trying to figure out how to get the community outreach to, um, like, we were looking at revitalizing this and putting investment. And that's excellent because, um, I think, uh, making sure that we put the, the effort into restoring and, and keeping the, um, community connection with this theater, but also just, um, um, ensuring that our residents, uh, they know what's already happening, but like, they see it as, as you said, like, with connections with restaurants and things like that. So I don't have a particular idea, just that, um, I think that in this process, while we're also, um, looking to find the matching grant, but also just, I love, I love crazy ideas. I love, you know, hearing from people and sort of thinking of, um, things that theater's doing really, really well already, but other opportunities that other places are doing in ways that we can bring something new into Carlisle and, uh, and, and, you know, keep me from leaving for a concert every so often. Um, but anyway, I do, do love, uh, our theater, and I want you to note that, um, I'm in support of your, your process.
Thank you. Uh, Ashley and I are working, uh, in finalizing a tourism development grant application to the Cumberland Area Economic Development Corporation. That'll be focused on two things, ADA compliance, but also sound and lighting technology upgrades, which again will, I believe, I know, will permit us to afford a broader range of acts there, because we are limited from a technological standpoint right now. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank, thank you. Next on, uh, presentations, we have Penn State, uh, Dickinson Law, the Anti-Racist Development Institute. And with us here this evening, we have Dean Danielle Conway and Tuanda Hunter-Stalworth, Program Manager. Um, and as they, they make their way, uh, to, to the podium, um, I'm going to note that this is, uh, this presentation is, uh, primarily, um, due to recommendations that the Truth and Reconciliation Commission, uh, made. And the, the commission made a number of recommendations in the areas of law enforcement, arts and public education, housing, and neighborhood vibrancy, public health, business and commerce, indigenous relations, and then the future of, of the work. And the presentation this evening, uh, came, came about because of the future of the work and really helping to lay a foundation for establishing, uh, the recommendations and implementing the recommendations. So one of the recommendations on the future of the work was for council to partner, the borough to partner with an organization like the Anti-Racist Development Institute of Penn State Dickinson Law. And as luck would have it, we have Penn State Dickinson Law right in the boundaries of the borough, and they have an Anti-Racist Development Institute. So Dean Conway.
Thank you. It's amazing how that happened. So Mayor Schultz, council members, community members, I'm very pleased to be here. Here's a roadmap for you. We're going to talk about engaging historicity, that means the facts and the people who are part of the events of our past. We'll hope to define institutional anti-racism for everyone because we want to center everyone's understanding of the concept instead of hearing opinions about it. We're going to talk about a mechanism for engaging discourse called design thinking to allow us to listen critically, to allow us to hear others, and to allow us to center others. And then hopefully we'll answer questions. So many of you may be cognizant of this building. It is in Ghana, and it is one of the unfortunately named slave castles. So to understand historicity and understand how we in the United States have come to develop our economy, our education system, our community system, we have to understand where we've been, to understand where we come from. So many of us were brought here in chains. My ancestors, ancestors of others, and we were brought here as enslaved peoples. That is fact. And so to understand that is to begin the process of acknowledgement. It's also important to understand the connections between that history and how it impacts the legacy of experiences of people in this nation. And so that's a laundry list there. You can see that. I don't have to repeat it. But I'm very happy to open up our educational enterprise, in case you want to dig deeper with us. You probably will not be able to read this slide, but part of what we do at the law school and also across the nation, law schools across the nation, is we chart the impact that a system of racial inequality had on the existence of our processes of law, policy, and practices. So what this graphic is showing you is how systemic racial inequality is built in to our legal system. The very system that I practice in, the very system that I teach about, we have to acknowledge that this exists and that we perpetuate that knowledge through the system. Even I, as a Black woman, teach according to the system. But the idea behind the Anti-Racist Development Institute is to uncover that. And then, once the veil is taken off, to demonstrate to students how they can use the knowledge to represent those who live in the system. So this seems like a very word-driven slide. But let me tell you in three simple phrases what institutional anti-racism is. It's acknowledging history, acknowledging systemic racial inequality, acknowledging oppression, acknowledging subordination. I was on a call today during a keynote presentation, and I explained the difference between acknowledgement and belief. One does not have to change their belief or belief system to make acknowledgement. So if one says, "This is the system that I have experienced," that may not be believed by others. But the others, because we're in community together, have a responsibility to acknowledge that lived experience of that other person. So acknowledgement. The next element is to act by bringing knowledge to the fore. So to learn about these systems. Again, one has a belief, but that doesn't not stop one from learning about systems. And then the last element is to act, to take action. Action could be as simple as saying, "I will acknowledge, even if my belief system is different." So first, acknowledgement. Second, to learn, be an active learner. Third, to act. So I do hope when you hear things on the news or you hear commentary, that you will retain those three words that I talked about in your own understanding now of what anti-racism is. So we're not showing the video?
Yeah, but this slide should have gone before.
Oh, okay. Well, since it should have gone before, you can talk about it. So the framework, uh, as Dean Conway mentioned. In the various systems, particularly in our communities, and particularly as it relates to the Borough of Carlisle. From empathizing, we go to, um, defining what those needs are. What are people experiencing specifically? And how can we ideate or brainstorm around that pain, around what those needs are, uh, and then develop a prototype. From that prototype, we test it out, and then we begin that process all over again. It's important to note with this slide that our design thinking process is an iterative process. And so we are on a journey together. We work through this together, that we're not in a hurry to solve, that we, that we, we have to release ourselves of the idea of getting it right, but that we are going to keep doing it and keep doing it. Now, I'll go back to the video. So this video, uh, is, talks a little bit about design thinking, um, from something that we might all have a little experience with.
There's this door on the tenth floor of the Vox Media Office that I hate so much. God damn it. Do you ever get this door wrong?
Pretty regularly.
Have you seen people misuse it?
All the time, every day, constantly.
Me too, Kelsey. But here's the thing. As soon as you start looking for confusing doors, they are everywhere.
It's push.
Why? I feel like Roman Mars would know about this.
This is ninety-nine percent invisible, and those doors you hate are called Norman Door.
What's a Norman Door?
Don Norman wrote the essential book about design. He is the Norman of the Norman Door.
All right. And where is this guy?
You must go to San Diego.
Okay.
Hi, Joe.
Hey.
I'm Don Norman. I'm... Gee, you know, it's hard to describe what I am.
Well, he's been a professor of psychology, professor of cognitive science, professor of computer science, a vice president of advanced technology at Apple, but for our purposes.
I was spending a year in England. I got so frustrated with my inability to use the light switches and the water taps and the doors even, that I wrote this book.
If I continually get a door wrong, is it my fault?
If I continually get a door wrong, is it my fault?
No. In fact, if you continually get it wrong, it's a good, but if other people continually get it wrong, good sign that it's a really bad door.
A Norman door is one where the design tells you to do the opposite of what you're actually supposed to do or gives the wrong signal and needs a sign to correct it.
Why does it need an instruction manual? That is, why do you have to have a sign that says "push" or "pull"? Why not make it obvious?
It can be obvious if it's designed right.
There are a couple of really simple, basic principles of design, and one of them I'll call discoverability. When I look at something, I should be able to discover what operations I can do.
The principle applies to a whole lot more than doors.
And it's amazing with many of our computer systems today. You look at it, there's no way of knowing what's possible. Should I, uh, tap it once or twice or even triple tap? So discoverability, when it's not there, well, you don't know to use something.
Another is feedback.
And so many times there's no feedback. You have no idea what happened or why it happened.
And these principles form the basis of how designers and engineers work today, commonly known as user or human-centered design.
I decided at one point the word "user" was a bit degrading. Why not call people people? And it's amazingly simple and amazingly seldom practiced. We call it iterative because it goes around in a circle. We go out and we observe what is happening today. We observe people doing the task. And from that, we say, "Oh, we have some ideas. Here's what we should perhaps propose to do."
Then you prototype your solution and test it.
Quite often, these are wrong at first, but each time we go around the circle, we do a better job of making the device until the point we're actually making something that really works.
And this process has spread all over the world.
And it turns out it's improving lives.
From better everyday things like the ones that Don wrote about.
To using the same process to solve huge problems in public health in developing countries.
Water.
Sanitation.
Farming.
Lots more. So what'd be a better human-centered door?
An ideal door is one that as I walk up to it and walk through it, I'm not even aware that I had opened the door and shut it. So if you had a door which had a flat plate, what could you do? Nothing. The only thing you can do is push. So see, you wouldn't need a sign. A flat plate, you push.
This kind of push bar with the piece sticking out on one side works well too. So you can see what side you're supposed to push on.
The vertical bars could go either way. A simple little hand thing, though, sort of indicates pull.
But we still have terrible, terrible doors in the world, so many of them.
There are lots of things in life that are fairly standardized and therefore, whether I buy this house or not, it is not a function of whether it has good doors in it. And so, uh, except for safety reasons, doors tend not to be improved.
But the tyranny of bad doors must end.
I think that it's a really shitty design. In fact, they put a pull handle when it's a push. And it should be a flat panel right here and not a [BLEEP] pull handle. That's very misleading.
You're right, Becky. You're goddamn right.
Hey, so as you can see, since I started to step in the right direction, thank you so much for watching and to ninety-nine...
So the point of that is, I hope you see the connection. You know, just like you can design a really, really bad door, you can also design a really, really bad society. And just like you can design a really, really good door, you can design a really, really good society. And part of that is tapping into human-centered thinking and doing it over and over and over and over again. And I'm so proud that we at Penn State Dickinson Law are the leaders of two hundred law schools in bringing this approach to institutional anti-racism, not just here in Carlisle, but across the nation. And I often talk about my neighbors and my colleagues in Carlisle, Pennsylvania, in this borough. And I say, "I am at home because these are people who know how to center one another." And I extol our virtues as a community everywhere I go. I guess the next place we'll be going is New York, and then after that I'll be going to Nebraska to talk about the same thing. And I take you all in Carlisle, in my heart, in my head, every time I go and talk about institutional anti-racism. Thank you. I heard there might be questions.
Not too fast.
See, I was running back to my seat.
That's, that's my law school. And Mr. Powers. Um, any questions from, from Borough Council or comments?
I don't have any questions. I just want to say that, um, I grew up here and I love seeing the work that you are doing there. It's really important and I am very grateful for you and for this work. And it is really, really needed and necessary. So I applaud you. I don't know if I've said that before or not. If I haven't, I'm saying it now in front of everybody, so I can't take it back. Um, but I applaud the work that you're doing and I thank you every day. Thank you.
Anything else from council? Um, what, what I would like us to do, um, moving forward is, uh, work, work with the law school, uh, to develop a contract, uh, to bring forward and, uh, in the coming months. Hopefully before our, our budget, uh, comes up, uh, and we'll have our discussions in, in November. Um, I prefer the summer if that's possible. I know, I know Penn State may, may need some time to sort of work, work through those, those issues and get something through us, but I'm very excited about this opportunity. Um, and I want to move this forward as, as quickly as we can.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's been a great meeting so far. And, and now Richard, Mr. Judd, uh, you have, you have a financial update for us, which is always entertaining also. And the folks from the theater should know, I'm going to embarrass Richard. Richard, Richard is a bit of, of a thespian himself. I'm, I'm trying to keep him here, Richard. We'll, we'll take a moment.
Thanks.
Finance is clear as the room. There we go. There we go.
All right. Uh, thank you, uh, Mayor, members of council and the public for this opportunity to talk about the, uh, financial, uh, operations of the borough, uh, for the first quarter of twenty twenty-four. So the first thing we'll talk about tonight is our general fund. So what you'll see as I go through this presentation, uh, the Borough of Carlisle tracks funding, um, through things that we call funds. So our general fund is really our, um, catch-all operating fund where, uh, it's primarily funded by taxes. So in the general fund, you're going to see our police operations, our fire, finance, parks and recreation, um, human resources, public works. Uh, all of those, uh, kind of fall into this category. And the expenses aren't necessarily covered by, uh, rates that we charge. The exception to that is parks and recreation. Um, a lot of their programming, uh, is, um, funded through charges for services. Um, but you'll see under that line item, uh, under revenue, that charges for services is really just a small part of what makes up our revenue in the general fund. So a couple of highlights on the general fund. Uh, things are looking good in the first quarter, uh, meeting expectations. From an expenditure standpoint, uh, you'll see that supplies, services, utilities are a little bit higher than previous years. Um, one of the major reasons for that is timing of when we spend the money. So Springbrook Software is our primary financial, uh, software suite. Uh, we paid for that in the first quarter of this year. Typically, that occurs, uh, towards the end of the year. Uh, you'll also see that our police body camera package that we, uh, got last year was included in our capital program, so it wouldn't have shown up here last year. But, uh, being that this is the first year of operations, the continued fees that we pay, uh, it's helping increase some of those expenses this year. All of this was budgeted, uh, so we're well within expectations. On the revenue side of things, uh, the licenses and permits, you're going to see a dip in revenue. Uh, primarily that's related to our rental housing inspection program. Uh, last year, uh, we saw most of the revenue come in related to that that we expected. Uh, you know, according to our budget this year, we anticipated a drop in that, and that's exactly what we're seeing. Uh, for real property taxes, uh, tax bills go out in March, so we're just starting to see that revenue being collected. Uh, so that's why you'll see that our expenses are outpacing our revenues in the first quarter. Um, as the year goes on, we'll collect more of that taxes and it'll help us balance out that, uh, gap there. So the net loss that you're seeing is expected. Uh, and you'll see across the board there over the years, it's pretty typical. Um, some things I wanted to point out for twenty twenty-three. Um, we're going through our audit right now. We have a yearly independent audit. Uh, they'll be coming to council to present once that's ready. It's a pretty robust, um, practice to go through this audit, so that typically occurs mid-year. But a couple of things I wanted to point out based on, um, that are differences from what we had proposed in our budget expectations last year is, uh, the general fund had initially planned to, uh, assist in the purchase of kiosks. That actual purchase didn't occur until twenty twenty-four. So that's going to lower our anticipated expenses in twenty twenty-three, presenting some savings there. And then we'll, uh, see that occur in twenty-four. Uh, the other item is our co-responder program. We had in the budget last year to start that program. It really kicked off this year, and at the last meeting, uh, we got to meet, um, our co-responder. So, uh, we'll see that expense starting this year. Our enterprise funds, so this is not tax-supported. Um, what you'll see in the financials is typically, uh, the primary revenue driver is charges for services. So all the services that we provide, water, sewer, uh, stormwater management, um, as we incur those expenses, we charge fees or rates to help cover those costs. The first thing I wanted to point out in total is where we are with our past due utility accounts. You'll see from twenty twenty through twenty twenty-four, there's been a decrease in the amount of outstanding accounts, uh, the amount that people owe us. In twenty twenty, it was the pandemic. We had, uh, implemented some policies that we weren't going to charge late fees. We weren't going to terminate people to provide flexible, um, ability to pay the borough during that difficult financial time. Uh, as the year went, the years went on, you saw an increase in the amount of properties that were leanable, meaning their balances were above four hundred and thirty-six dollars. Uh, and then now through twenty twenty-four, a significant decrease in that. So we're really happy to see that. Um, a couple of things that, that we're doing to help, um, with the new smart, uh, reading capabilities of our meters. Uh, we're able to identify leaks on a weekly basis, um, and go out and notify, uh, community members that they may have a leak to help reduce unanticipated high bills. In the past, uh, community members would have to wait a whole quarter before seeing that they had a leak and it could be very hefty. So, um, we're happy to work with public work staff to, to get that implemented on a weekly basis. Um, I do want to remind everybody that we continue to offer flexible payment arrangements. If somebody's struggling and needs a little bit more time, uh, to pay their utility bills, uh, they can call the finance staff and we'll work with them to set up a payment arrangement and then can also speak with them about potential, uh, utility assistance programs that exist. So a lot of these utility funds are going to look similar. So I'll spend a little more time on the water fund and then we'll go through the other funds pretty quickly. So our water fund, um, down under revenue, that charges for services, that's where I was referencing where we charge a fee or charge a rate for the, uh, water used. Um, there is no line item here for taxes. Uh, this fund is meeting expectations. Um, from an expense standpoint, we're seeing an increase in salaries and wages due to how we've allocated, um, employee time. Our employees, especially in public work, spend a lot of time, uh, maintaining our infrastructure underground. So we've allocated that to see, um, a little bit more, um, time spent on, on water and water infrastructure. So we're seeing an increase there. Uh, from a revenue perspective, uh, in the utility accounts, we bill after the fact. So in this first quarter of the year, a lot of the billings that are going out relate to twenty twenty-three usage. Uh, because of that, um, as required by, um, you know, going through the audit, we moved that revenue back to the previous year. So you'll see that our, uh, percentage of revenue compared to the budget is low. Uh, and that's well within expectations. Um, we'll see that increase as the year goes on. Go to the next slide. Sewer fund, very similar, meeting expectations. Um, the transfers out in each of these accounts, um, you'll see a slight increase. And what that represents is each fund's contribution to the general fund for administrative services that are shared. Uh, so finance primarily falls in the general fund, uh, but I certainly am involved in the billing, uh, and other aspects of these other funds, so they contribute to help cover these shared costs. Uh, the other revenues line item, uh, seeing an increase. We're seeing more tapping fees. So the water and the sewer, as construction progress, projects go out, uh, and they connect to our water and sewer line, they have to pay a fee, and that goes back into the fund to help cover the costs of service. Stormwater fund is meeting expectations. Nothing really exciting to talk about here. Um, it's, it's really on par, um, with previous years, so we're happy to see that. Our solid waste fund, you'll see that the last two years are different than the previous years. This is turned into an in-and-out account. We're essentially, uh, everything that we're charged by our vendor, uh, we pass on to the customer, they pay us, and we pay that vendor. So this fund, you'll see in terms of revenue, twenty-five percent. Really, it's at a quarter of the year, uh, and it's really the only fund that kind of follows that given that it's in in and out. Uh, a couple of things I'll point out in terms of expenditures. Um, in twenty twenty-three, in the first quarter, we sold six thousand, six hundred and thirty tags. And that's for any property, uh, that participates in our program that has, um, additional trash above and beyond, uh, what we allow each week. Uh, compare that to the first quarter of this year, and we're at two thousand, four hundred and sixty. So it kind of indicates that last year, being the first year, people weren't really sure what to expect. Uh, so they went out, stocked up on tags, and I think we're kind of seeing that, you know, even out a little bit. Uh, in terms of revenue, the one thing I'll point out under intergovernmental, uh, we got a recycling grant. We typically get that each year, but, um, due to delays uh, in processing by the state, we haven't seen it for a number of years. And so we're happy to see that, um, that we got that in this first quarter. Typically, it'll come out towards the end of the year each year. Um, but this one, I think, is related to twenty twenty-two, so we are expecting more, um, for twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. Our parking fund, this covers our garage and our downtown lots and also our metered spaces. Uh, it's meeting expectations. Um, over the years, our, uh, supply, services, and utilities have seen a decrease. That's just due to timing of when we, uh, pay, uh, our contribution to our parking partners. Uh, revenues, meeting expectations. Uh, one thing I'll note, uh, in regards to our, uh, downtown parking is the switch from our smart meters to kiosks. Um, all the silver meters are going to now operate under this kiosk system. Uh, one of the things that I wanted to point out is that installation is penciled in for May sixth. Uh, we've ordered the signage we need, uh, and are really kind of underway getting the materials. So now it's about scheduling that time. It'll be about a two-week installation, and during that time, we'll be working with Stephanie to promote the fact that we're not going to be, uh, charging, um, or enforcing during that period to kind of eliminate some of that confusion. This last slide is just the summary of everything I've talked about. Uh, that revenue, you're going to see the real property, nothing else, no fund other than the general fund has that. And then the reverse with the charges for services, um, that's where the enterprise funds really come in. That's it.
Okay. Any questions, comments from council?
Sorry, I, I just have one thing which isn't really necessarily for you particularly, but it's about...
Sorry, I, I just have one thing which isn't really necessarily for you particularly, but it's about budgets and, and, uh, and our community. So my neighbor, um, just talked to me, she called me while I was getting out of my car yesterday, um, and she was not aware that our, um, our solid waste fee was going to go up and then also, um, so this is, this is about us telling the story, right? So the video that, that, uh, that they showed was like very helpful in design thinking, instead of thinking of like this very high level description. It's like a very practical, Stephanie and I really enjoyed the Lego, uh, bike box, uh, video last night at the, um, at the other presentation. So in general, uh, m- my neighbor was under the assumption that there would be more storm drains with our stormwater fee. And, and then also try, I tried to let them know, uh, about, um, that that is coming from a federal, uh, level of expectation. That's why when we had our presentation, there were certain things that met the level of, um, mitigation, right? So there's things like that, that sometimes they think, why is the borough doing this? Why do we have to spend this money? You know, I, I brought up about us looking at maybe bringing garbage in-house, right? So there's things that we're doing and I think when, we have all these numbers and everything, but there's like the, what they actually have to pay. And so I think just us continually thinking of how, how we can practically and authentically tell the story and make people understand. And, um, we also understand that it's, it's, uh, it's tough out there financially in this world. But I think, just trying to think of as, as we're continually, um, talking about budget, how we can also tell that story to our community in, in the most understandable way and just seem like, uh, like we're listening, so.
Sure.
Anything else? Thank you, Richard.
Okay, thanks and thanks for saying.
Next is our consent agenda. So this is a list of routine items which do not appear to be controversial in nature and which probably do not require additional discussion. They can be acted on by one motion in their current form. If discussion is desired on any particular item, any member of council or the public may request the item be removed from the consent agenda and that item will be considered separately. Is any member of council requesting an, an item be considered separately? Any, oh.
Before we move on this, I, I just wanted to make the comment, um, one of the items of the D C N R grant, um, just so we don't brush it off. Uh, I really appreciate the effort, uh, being agile, uh, short notice responding to that. And that's just one of several examples of our staff really being, being much more responsive to opportunities out there.
Thank you. Any member of the public wishing to have an item considered separately? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
I'll take the motion from Council Melon, uh, second Deputy Mayor Landis. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say nay. And the motion passes. There are no table, continued and recurring items. Um, under my report, um, I move the council endorse the downtown Carlisle Association's grant pursuit through the Cumberland Area Economic Development Corporation for the purposes of securing funding for the West High Street mural project and potentially other artistic enhancements. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Deputy Mayor Landis. I don't think, we don't have anybody presenting on this this evening, okay. And, and any discussion on this item? Now I'll call the question, all those in favor please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say nay. Motion passes, thank you all. Uh, next, economic development, Council Perry.
Um, I have three items on the agenda tonight. Um, the first one is I make a motion for the council to adopt an ordinance approving an agreement by, in between the Downtown Carlisle Association and the Borough of Carlisle, re- retroactive to January first, two thousand twenty-four through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four.
Councilor Perry makes a motion to approve our annual agreement with Downtown Carlisle Association. Is there a second? Second, second by Councilor Stube. I'll call the question, this calls for a roll call. Madam Secretary, the roll call, please.
Mr. Hicks.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Landis.
Aye.
Ms. Mellon.
Aye.
Ms. Perry.
Aye.
Ms. Ruse.
Aye.
Mr. Stube.
Aye.
Aye. And the motion, the motion carries, thank you.
For my second item tonight, I make a motion, um, for council to consider a resolution that shall amend Resolution zero-two, zero-nine, seventeen, oh-two designating the Downtown Carlisle Association's New Year's Eve celebration as a borough-sponsored event and furthermore retroactively waive the borough imposed fees for the December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three event.
Council Perry makes a motion to retroactively, uh, approve the New Year's Eve celebration by D C A as a borough-sponsored event and to retroactively waive the borough imposed fees for two thousand twenty-three, the hotchy dog drop that we, we were reminded about earlier. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Stube, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say nay. The motion carries.
And for my last item tonight, I make a motion for council to approve the Downtown Carlisle Association's request to place four receptacles near specific tree wells in downtown Carlisle for the purpose of providing disposable bags for pet waste.
Council Perry makes a motion to approve D C A's request to place four receptacles near specific tree wells in downtown Carlisle. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Stube, any discussion? I'll call the question, all those in favor please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say nay. The motion passes.
Um, and that concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you, Council Mellon, Employee Relations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have one item tonight. I'm very happy to move that council authorized Mayor Schultz to execute an agreement by, in between the Borough of Carlisle and Pyrotechnical Fireworks, Inc. for the two thousand twenty-four Starsburst Over Carlisle event that is scheduled for July third, two thousand twenty-four, with a rain date of July sixth, two thousand twenty-four.
Council Mellon makes a motion to approve my execution of the agreement to bring the fireworks back for two thousand twenty-four. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Perry, any discussion? I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to comment and I know, I know Council Mellon, um, has said it's not, it's not about her and, and I know she, she took this up and, and made this happen. But it'll be, it'll come with a lot of thanks for a number of organizations in, in the weeks, weeks to come.
Yes, I will say, we are signing the contract, but the fundraising is not done. I will still be going out and asking some more businesses and organizations to help us support, um, to bringing the fireworks back. So, just so you know.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I'll call the question, all those in favor please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say nay. And the motion carries. Thank you, Council Mellon. Next, under public safety, I move that council authorize the closure of the first block of West Pomfords Street from South Hannover Street to the Pomfords Street parking garage entrance on June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four, from ten a.m. to eight p.m. for a community event sponsored by B and L Caribbean Restaurant. Approval shall be contingent upon the receipt of a valid certificate of insurance naming the Borough of Carlisle as an additional insured and the applicant reimbursing the borough one hundred percent of the variable costs and ten percent of the fixed costs associated with this event. Is there a second?
Second.
That was old, that was old hat.
A second.
If I could give a, a co-second, we would do that. Thank you for the second, Council Rose.
You can take the safety out of me, but you can't.
Can't help it. Okay, is there any discussion on this item? I think we're very excited to have, have this event again this year. I'll call the questions here, um, all those in favor please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say nay. The motion carries. Next, I move that council approve a special events application for the Hope Station Juneteenth Celebration to be held on June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. It's not a typo, it's the, the same day you get to enjoy two events. From ten a.m. to four p.m., the event will take place on the one hundred block of West Penn Street near Hope Station and Memorial Park. Approval shall be contingent upon the receipt of a valid certificate of insurance naming the Borough of Carlisle as an additional insured and the applicant reimbursing the borough one hundred percent of the variable costs and ten percent of the fixed costs associated with this event. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Rose. Any discussion? I'll call the question, all those in favor please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say nay. And that motion carries, another exciting event that we get to have annually in this borough. Next, I move that council adopt an ordinance establishing a temporary parking ban affecting certain borough streets in conjunction with Carlisle Productions' two thousand twenty-four schedule of, of events. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Ruse, and this is a roll call vote, Madam Secretary, please.
Mr. Hicks.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Landis.
Aye.
Ms. Mellon.
Aye.
Ms. Perry.
Aye. Aye.
Mr. Stube.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Next, I move that council adopt an ordinance amending the code of the Borough of Carlisle, adopted by ordinance two thousand thirty-two and thereafter amended with respect to chapter two forty-four, vehicles and traffic, to add one on-street handicap parking space at one sixty-two East Penn Street. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Ruse, any discussion on this item? Hearing none, I'll call the question again, this is a roll call vote, please, Madam Secretary.
Mr. Hicks.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Landis.
Aye.
Ms. Mellon.
Aye.
Ms. Perry.
Aye.
Ms. Ruse. Aye.
Mr. Stube.
Aye.
Mayor Schulz.
Aye. And the motion carries. Next, Public Works, Mr. Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have three items this evening. First, I move that Borough Council approve a unit-priced construction contract with Stewart and Tate Incorporated of York, Pennsylvania for the two thousand and twenty-four street maintenance program in the amount of three dollars and twenty-five cents per square yard of applied surface under the cap-cog two thousand twenty-four micro-surfacing contract.
Council Stube makes a motion to approve the unit-priced construction contract with Stewart and Tate Incorporated of York. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Hicks, I thought you were gonna delay on that one. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say nay. The motion carries.
Next, I move that Borough Council enter into an engineering services contract with Gann Fleming Incorporated to perform a planning, design and permitting of green water, green stormwater infrastructure projects at three of the priority locations identified in the borough's stormwater master plan for a not-to-exceed cost of one hundred eighty-six thousand six hundred dollars, subject to the borough solicitors' review and approval of the contract.
Councilor Stube makes a motion to enter into an engineering services contract with Gann Fleming, uh, for the planning, design and permitting of green stormwater infrastructure projects at three of our priority locations. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Hicks, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say nay. The motion carries.
And finally, I move that Borough Council authorize the reduction in the amount of financial security posted by the Giant Company LLC for the Burger King Land Development located at nine hundred and fifty East High Street in the amount of one hundred and forty-five thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars to reflect work completed to date.
Council Stube authorized the reduction of financial security posted by the Giant Company LLC for Burger King Land Development located nine fifty East High Street. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Hicks, any discussion? I'll call the question, all those in favor please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say nay. The motion carries. Next up, sustainability and community planning, Council Hicks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, I have three items this evening, um. Probably spending most of our discussion time on the first item in white, while Dennis, um, you're coming up here, um, I will introduce him briefly, uh, shortly. And as we get the, um, the slide deck up, um, I just wanna kinda set the stage for what this is about, so maybe you might, um, have some questions. And what, we're starting the conversation with this M O U, um, between us and potentially with dual community power, is really a discussion about one of the fundamental things we do, um, with, I mean, municipality, local government is service provisioning. We do that with in-house, what, with water, wastewater, sewer, uh, solid waste. And I think we've gotten used to not really thinking about, um, natural gas and electricity use because that's, that's been a franchise, where we have, uh, an investor-owned utility who, who does that. There are many rules in different states, um, in terms of what the municipality's role is in provisioning, um, like electricity service. As most of you know, in the state of Pennsylvania, we're a deregulated state. All of us have the opportunity, uh, through P A Power Switch. I hope everybody in here knows that they have the ability to go on P A Power Switch to select their provider. But as you might expect, our, our electricity provider, who really just manages transmission and distribution, P P L, they do a wonderful job and they've been a great partner with us, uh, they have to provide a default rate that's required. It's probably a good thing, uh, that somebody does that and they, they are held accountable by the P U C of Pennsylvania to have a rate that is, uh, affordable, reliable, but it is not necessarily the cheapest rate and it's not necessarily a reflection of any priority of the types of generation that, uh, we would maybe prefer, um, as a municipality. And so, um, Dennis, um, is part of a group, um, that has been looking a little bit deeper about, um, legally what options we have, um, especially in the context of Carlisle Borough where we have very specific goals. And, um, we'll talk a little bit more about them, about how, how this ability for us to be a little bit more involved as a, as a council in provisioning electricity service may actually help us reach some of our, um, uh, pollution reduction goals. So without further ado, I'm, I will turn it over to Dennis, um, and, uh, he's gonna walk, uh, through us about another option that I, I think might be attractive for us to consider moving forward. So with that, Dennis, the floor is yours.
Great, thank you, Councilman Hicks. Dennis Rowan from Lansdowne Borough, just west of, uh, West Philadelphia. Had a great trip out here, took me only about twenty kilowatt hours to get here. Those of you who are driving E V, um, it's pretty good, averaged about six miles per kilowatt hour, which is equivalent to about two hundred and ten miles per gallon. So it's exciting because all that energy was produced in, uh, Pennsylvania and we produce electricity in many different ways. And as Councilman Hicks just said, we, we have these choices and as a borough, um, you know, the Borough of Carlisle, uh, has choices now that are exciting. I look around the room, I see all these information devices that, when I grew up, we didn't have any of them. And what's really exciting in energy right now is there's all these incredible scientists, energy scientists, distributed energy resources like electric vehicles, like battery storage. I know the borough has a lot of energy efficiency initiatives. There are now inductive stoves, heat pumps, and you can save a lot of energy. Community choice aggregation is about choosing, um, as Councilman Hicks said, congruent with the borough's goals. I know you're a platinum, uh, certified borough, which is very hard to achieve. Congratulations to the borough under Sustainable Pennsylvania. So community choice aggregation, it would enable the borough to choose on behalf, not just for the facilities of the borough, but for the residents, because it is kind of difficult on Pennsylvania Power Switch. How many of you have actually switched? Great, it's, and on the council, okay, not to put you on the spot, but it, so one thing on Pennsylvania Power Switch, it's great that we have retail choice and community choice builds on that. But with choosing one by one, you don't get access to wholesale markets, you have to watch out for teaser rates. You might look at your bill, right? What you're choosing there is the generator, right? If you want clean supply, Pennsylvania solar, Pennsylvania wind, it's pretty hard to do it. So I commend all of you who have done it one by one. Uh, let's go to the next slide, oh, so go back Stephanie, sorry. So, uh, we are bringing, uh, C C A to Pennsylvania. You can see a lot of our neighboring states in the northeast have C C A. We're very excited, uh, as Joel said, we've been looking at this for a number of years. We've discovered an existing borough pathway in the Pennsylvania Borough Code where, in a nutshell, the borough can keep out supply that it doesn't want to come in and it can select what it brings in. And, uh, I will get into that in more detail. So, uh, now Stephanie, we can go forward and, uh, what prompted me, I'm an electric vehicle specialist, been working in energy, energy efficiency, solar, but last fifteen years, electric vehicles. But about ten years ago, I saw New York State, um, was moving to become a C C A state. And then subsequent to that, I saw all of these, uh, towns, boroughs, municipalities in Pennsylvania, like Carlisle, adopting climate action plans, sustainability initiatives. So C C A is really, uh, I'm, I'm the state organizer, really just educating, uh, the boroughs, seeing what they're doing and saying, hey, C C A may be congruent with all the steps you're taking. So here, just in a nutshell, you can see some of the counties we've been working with, as I said, I'm from Lansdowne, so we've started in southeast P A. Even though we've been looking at this initiative for three years, we've really just started signing communities up. for three years, we've really just started signing communities up to the memorandum of understanding. And I'll get into that MOU. And you can see in Cumberland County, the Borough of Carlisle is one of the leaders with your climate action plan. Let's go forward, Stephanie. And so over the past three years, we've had our leading CCA Borough Committee has been formed. Most of these boroughs are down by Lansdowne, Narber, Swarthmore Media, Lansdowne. We've had Borough. We just started reaching out to Cumberland County and to Center County. About two weeks ago, State College Borough also joined the list. And on our team, we're all volunteers. I won't go through everybody. We're a bunch of old guys and gals. And we have about three hundred and fifty years of energy experience in energy law, solar, and with Mike Gordon's company. And Mike is on the call. I don't know if we can connect him later. Not yet, Stephanie, but put you on standby, Mike. Cool. Okay, great. Let's go forward. So the ask, and I'll just get into it, we'll come back to this slide later. It's a non-binding memorandum of understanding. We're going out to boroughs and saying, hey, we will develop this implementation plan. We will meet with your utility, PPL, work out, things like data security, transfer. We've been having conversations with PICO, who is the utility down in southeast PA. They are electric distribution companies known as EDCs. They make the same amount of money whether they're giving default supply or it's from the CCA. So their questions are, you know, what does the PUC say? What are you gonna do with data security, consumer protection, incentivizing more competition, all these things that we're doing. And so the MOU is saying, hey, let us go on your behalf, no cost, no commitment, go through this, meet with PPL, meet with the PUC, which we have done individually. And in about a month, we'll be submitting our plan for those boroughs who have signed the MOU. And it's not until way downstream where you would have meetings like this, say to the public, get the consensus, hey, we're really thinking about doing this. We're a sustainable community. This is right in line with what we want to do. It's gonna add a community choice. And that is way downstream. The ask right now is just step one, to consider the MOU and sign that non-binding MOU. Forward, please, Stephanie. And I'll toss it back to Councilman Hicks on this. But basically, you know, we look at the boroughs, like I said, the existing plans and say, hey, we believe that CCA will fit right in with your existing Borough of Carlisle plans. And, you know, we've been very impressed, looking at the climate action plan, looking at your status, as I said, the energy efficiency policies, and very impressed with the community and the, CCA is local energy democracy. That's another term for it. So it fits right in with other choices that the council makes for the betterment of the community. Joel, you wanna mention other things?
Yeah, I just, some of these may look familiar to some of us. I just wanted to highlight them. So just to reinforce what we're talking about and how it aligns with our public plans, these are all within our climate action plan. But as you know, we, back in twenty twenty, we passed a resolution to what was then the target of twenty-six percent reduction relative to two thousand and five levels by twenty twenty-five, and eighty percent by twenty fifty. And then reminding that if those targets get changed, that we will basically meet whatever state, federal, international commitments we have. So I did some number crunching after talking a bit with Dennis. So we're really talking about the residential electricity sector here, which if you look at our most recent greenhouse gas inventory, it equates about twenty-six thousand tons of CO2 equivalent per year. What does that mean? That's about eight percent of all of our emissions from Carlisle Borough as of twenty twenty-two. Quite a bit of emissions we're talking about being addressed by this option. Specifically, we have actions that we've approved that we will reduce regulatory barriers to renewable energy installation and use. And in our R four residential section, although we don't explicitly say we would want to increase the percentage of households with rooftop PV and participation in commercial solar projects, which right now still hasn't been signed by the legislature. If there had been an option, I can assure you, to have community choice aggregation, that would have been included in the language. Since it wasn't actually a legally defined area, it was omitted. But I think it's pretty safe to say the intent in the R four action is exactly addressed by what we're talking about today. So and just, you know, what would this actually mean? All of you did really good getting through the new methodology of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-two greenhouse gas inventory. We actually started detecting a few more things, which is why the emissions were a little higher. If we go back and sort of do apples to apples, if we take the methodology we used for twenty seventeen, which we went back to two thousand and five to compare, if we were to actually employ this CCA, we would just wouldn't go over the top of meeting our most short-term target, which was reduced by twenty-six percent by twenty twenty-five. By removing that twenty-six thousand tons per year, we would just go over the top, which is great. And so I just wanna kinda put that in perspective. You know, trying to reduce emissions in the residential, commercial, and industrial space, some of those, you know, private choices is a really tough thing for us to do. I mean, we have a lot more control over municipal ops. We have a lot more control over land use changes. Really tough thing to make, you know, especially large-scale changes in residential and commercial energy use. This is a rare opportunity. If we do find that the regulatory space, the interpretations, as we think it would allow us to do, could really be a major step in us reaching our most near-term goals. So I'll kick it back over to Dennis.
Excellent. Thank you, Councilman Hicks. Let's go forward, Stephanie, please. So this is Pennsylvania Power Switch. This is what we have today. Retail choice. Down in the lower left, residents can go direct with the default, the PPL. Who delivers it? They're also sourcing that from numerous generators around Pennsylvania. That default mix has about one point two pounds of greenhouse gases per kilowatt hour. That means the average house in Carlisle Borough is producing about six tons of greenhouse gases just from that standard mix. In my mind, you know, that's equivalent in terms of the damages that we now know to having lead in the drinking water and not doing something about it. The exciting thing now is energy, we can produce it in-state. We can produce it cleanly. And the borough has the choice based, again, on the initiatives, on the goals of the Borough of Carlisle. The residents do not have access to the wholesale markets in current Pennsylvania Power Switch. And you're, could be victim to fraud or teaser rates. And it's very difficult. As a result, only about ten percent. This was higher, and I commend those of you who switched. The average of Pennsylvania, only about ten percent have switched. Large consumers, commercial and industrial, can get access to the wholesale markets. Let's go next slide, Stephanie. So all that's changed with the CCA is the borough, through elected officials, chooses to issue a request for proposals. They go out into the market and they shape that RFP based on the constituents, based on the goals of the borough. We would like a hundred percent Pennsylvania solar, a hundred percent Pennsylvania wind, a fifty-fifty blend. And you pick out the terms that you want. You get the RFPs back on those critical steps. It's not until you get an acceptable RFP. Once you did, you would notify everybody, hey, we have added this choice. Everyone gets notified with a letter. And this, so everybody is opted into the CCA. Except if you have home solar, you wouldn't be opted in. If you were on a low income rate, you would not be opted in. So everybody has the option, oh, I wanna stay with the default supply. So it's adding a choice. Traditionally around the country, ninety percent of those in the CCA stay with the CCA. Let's go forward, Stephanie. So this is all revenue zero from the borough. The CCA administrator, who I mentioned, Mike Gordon, founder of Jewel Community Power, as I mentioned, I was up in New York State doing vehicle
Hey, Dennis.
Hey, Mike. I'm gonna toss it over to you in a second.
No worries.
Okay. Mike brought CCA to the state of New York in twenty fifteen. I called him up in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, said, hey, Mike, a lot of these boroughs and municipalities in Pennsylvania have these initiatives. They really want in-state renewable energy. We have retail choice. We have a borough pathway. What do you think? And with that, Mike Gordon, the founder, Chief Sustainability Officer of Jewel Community Power, I'll turn it over to you, Mike, for the next couple of slides.
Hey, cool. Just to underscore the message from the last couple of slides and as well, Councilman Hicks' message, the power supply bill, the electricity supply bill, is basically two bills. It's poles and wires, the transmission and distribution, and it's the electrons. Currently, you're able to go out competitively, as Councilman Hicks noted, and go get your electricity supply. But currently, the state determines that PPL is the default electricity supplier, which means that if you don't make a choice, the state determines that PPL will not only do the poles and wires, they will also do the electricity supply for you. All that this does is it allows the municipality to retain PPL as a backup, but to move the default, if you don't make an election, to the supplier of the community's choice. And of course, you choose that competitively and with more than really critical consumer protection. But everything remains the same in the sense that the bill comes from the same place, the utility. The poles and wires are serviced by the same folks, PPL. But then you are determining the default supply of electricity for your community. And one thing I'd like to underscore, one piece that I'm really proud of, is the education and engagement. We've put in an incredible amount of focus on connecting with people and making this simple for folks to understand, and also looking to build this program in a way that allows for you to be educated as well about sustainability opportunities with federal funding and all sorts of development of resources with federal and state funding, as well as with your own purchasing power. Let's keep going. And yeah, I can say that we went through a similar process in New York, Westchester County, New York, where before the regulators set up rules, we proposed to the regulators how we would formulate such a program. And that's exactly what we're doing here. Now, Sustainable Westchester achieved substantial savings. But if you take a look at this, that wavy line is the utility rates, which are quite volatile from month to month. And we negotiated a fixed rate that ultimately did save seventeen million dollars for roughly a hundred thousand households. But what we were comparing, it's apples to oranges in the sense that, in the sense that the Sustainable Westchester rate was renewable power and the default utility rate was similar to the mix in Pennsylvania, which is, you know, three point one percent. I think we're actually doing more in terms of buying, but three point one percent generated within the state of renewable power. So we're able to do that shift and protect consumers certainly against volatility. And ultimately, we believe that we have historically done, as have CCAs throughout the country, done quite well in comparison with utility rates with respect to prices for consumers. Let's keep going. I wanna underscore, this is not a commitment. We are focusing on, we have prepared a submission to the Utility Commission, and maybe it's in the next slide. I don't know. Yes. So, thank you. We've prepared a submission to the Utility Commission. All of the boroughs currently engaged are currently reviewing that. They have been deeply involved to this point. This MOU, there's no commitment to move forward at all. But we are at the stage where deep collaboration with the governor's office, with the Office of Consumer Advocates, with suppliers, with the utilities. We have not spoken to PPL because we do not have municipality currently a borough that is in PPL. So that that's one thing we will want to do should you guys confirm, affirm the MOU. But we are at the stage where we are ready to submit to the PUC. Now, our concern, we believe that the PUC will either say yes or no. If they say no, the ballgame's not over. There are other approaches that we can take. If they say yes, we're not gonna take any other approaches because it's simple. And I can tell you that they may say yes only to the boroughs that are within that submission. We're not submitting it that way. We are hopeful that this will open up the whole state as it did in New York. But we don't know that that's true, which is the reason that Dennis reached out to Councilman Hicks. Because if you guys do sign the MOU, while there isn't an obligation to move forward, we will be submitting an implementation plan to the PUC on your behalf that you could then choose to move on or not. But that would be a community collaborative engagement, as well as this whole process, which is outlined here. Any more for me? Or am I shutting up now?
Thanks, Mike. One amendment. We did get Camp Hill recently as well. And so the Borough of Carlisle would be the second. And we will be getting through
Got it.
PPL next week, so.
Oh, we do have a, we do have a meeting with PPL.
Hopefully, I should know tomorrow. Yep.
Excellent, superb, fantastic. Shows you what I know.
I think they do provide Camp Hill, right? PPL does provide.
Yes, yeah. So Carlisle would be the second. Yeah. So that's where we had started the process. It takes a while to get to the right people at the utility.
And the sorts of things that we are talking about, when we spoke with PICO, it's, okay, what's the education plan so that we do not confuse? What's the consumer protection? What's the data protection so that people's data is, remains confidential according to Pennsylvania law and best practices? And then how do we cooperate in procurement so that the state as a whole doesn't end up paying for our savings? And that really is communication and, you know, and an open, transparent approach. There's one other thing I do wanna emphasize. Yeah, this has the potential to move ninety percent of the folks in the community to renewable generation. However, core to our ethos is that we're looking to support the development of additional renewable generation. So that renewable energy certificates are fine. They're great. They are an interim strategy, incremental pieces. But the contract allows, as we've designed it and worked very closely with suppliers just so that they can freak out and say all the things that they dislike about our, this protection and that requirement. But it allows Uh but it allows us as boroughs to, for instance, commit to buy from a renewable power plant that would not be built without that buying commitment because that power plant wouldn't be able to get financing to build. So you can develop things on your own property, you can support the development of renewable power on others' property within the community, or you can go in the region and identify where people are intending to develop renewable power, um or at least considering it, and uh and support them uh if obviously you get the right price. And so that's a major piece of our focus to uh help develop renewable power and resilience so that we can identify reliability, uh microgrids for communities that truly need it and for places that you identify where you want to have particular reliability and supportive community objectives. The the CCA allows the the, a really flexible contract allows you to inject these resources into your contract to stabilize folks' rates and to develop your objectives with respect to new additional renewable power.
Thanks, Mike. So you can tell he's the administrator based on the detail, and he's going down to step seven, but coming back to where we are.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
It's simply, you know, the MOU non-binding, join the seven other boroughs and keep your option. If the PUC says, hey, these first eight boroughs, go ahead, do a two-year pilot, you would be included. Wouldn't have to, but you would you would have that option, and that's it.
Thanks, Dennis, just a couple of things, and I, first thing, most important, I wanna say, you said it three times. I think we'll probably have to say it five or six or seven more times. This is not taking any choices away from anybody. This is adding another choice to basically people's decision matrix. Last week, Daniel Kahneman died, he's a father of behavioral economics. There've been two Nobel Prizes in economics under behavioral economics. One of them went to Richard Thaler, who is credited for increasing the percentage of American households that are not in danger of going into retirement uh without necessary uh retirement funds. He got it by one simple thing, changing the default option. When people go into new employers saying, do you wanna default in to a retirement plan or default out? Would have been happening before was people would hear it and said, oh, I'll just get her background to it later. And they don't, people don't. People value their time, uh people um just, for whatever reason, they didn't get around to changing their option, even though they stated when they came in, they would like to plan for their retirement upfront. It's called choice architecture. Choice architecture is about giving people the ability to actually act on their stated preferences, to make their revealed preferences actually equate to their stated preferences. So price of electricity aside, reliability aside, but those are not distinguishing factors. We live in a community that has stated, all things being equal, we'd like to have clean power. That's what this is about, that's what about what having a an opt-in policy is about. We're adding a choice, we're reflecting what the stated preferences are, and we're not violating any of their other factors that would be be, you know, involved in their decision to procure electricity. So um this, again, this uh not too long ago, we 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 talked about a franchise with broadband, you know. This is the same kind of engagement at the early end of of potentially working with a provider, not a whole unlike, you know, a new broadband company coming into our community. Uh the good thing here is uh there's no new equipment that's, if we if we move forward, this is going to be transparent in terms of capital investment. This is basically in good faith, us working with a company who's done this before. As far as I know, is the only game in town in Pennsylvania looking to to move uh this particular community choice aggregation forward in the state of Pennsylvania. And it's basically us agreeing that, yes, we're interested in moving forward with them, um and uh we'll 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 learn more soon. So I just wanted to put that out there and um, yeah, just open it up to questions to Mike or or Dennis.
Any questions, comments? I'll I'll just say, I mean, again, I think a pretty exciting evening tonight, I think this is important. And I note the 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 fact that we've had a couple of things occur this evening will be taking a leap forward hopefully on recommendations that were made by our Truth and Recidulation Commission and a commission that had gotten the start just before that commission, the Climate Action Commission. This is an impressive leap forward potential um here. Um I'm, of course, in in favor of moving forward with this. And I think it's important to to underscore again that what with, to me, what this does is it provides local control over that 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 default option, which until now has been really a state state governed um control. And not only that, I think a lot of people, I I I use PA Power Switch, and sometimes I feel like a a day trader playing the stock market, trying to find all the my my way and all that volatility in the in the market. And the fact that we could have some stability to that, I think would be pretty meaningful um to to a lot of people in this borough. So, thank you.
You alluded to it, I I regret, I will not have the opportunity to ever take advantage of this. Because we have rooftop solar on our house, uh we do have to work. So I I hope you all consider that, um come talk to me if you're interested in doing that. But uh you you will actually have to work with PPL's plan, it's it's just that that makes sense in a lot of ways to uh be plugged in because they have to monitor, right, how much electricity is coming in and and going out, so. But being that we we still have a relatively few, you know, number of households that have rooftop solar, uh that this is gonna reach a lot more in our community, um so.
Yeah, the stat that was up there is it reaches ninety percent of the community. Traditionally, around the country, about ten percent of people opt out. But ninety percent are staying in, some of those who originally originally opt out, opt back in when they see, hey, this was saving. Around the country, CCAs that started in Massachusetts in two thousand nine have been saving between two to twenty percent has been the savings for their consumers. And uh one thing, big thing different that I like about CCA, and Mike mentioned, the ongoing energy education. As I mentioned, I do a lot of electric vehicles. There's so much that the consumer needs to know, they can go to the borough website and say, hey, here's the solar installers, here's the EV credits, here's the rebates, here's the heat pumps. Right now, as you know, there's four thousand grants through the bipartisan infrastructure law and the Inflation Reduction Act. About two hundred of them are on energy. And I see CCAs, and they're really helping those consumers. Some of these for low income, you can get a heat pump for free. People don't know that, and that so the CCA can, that ongoing, I'm an energy educator, so that's what got me so excited about this. I can get all the EV information out there and everything else, so it's not buy the renewable energy and go away. It's ongoing, and the borough drives what that CCA does.
Thanks again, Dennis, I appreciate you coming out here. Well, Mr. Mayor, I move that council uh consider entering into a memorandum of understanding. Thank you. Again, I'd move that council consider entering into a memorandum of understanding with Jewel Community Power relating to the establishment of community choice aggregation authority and implementation of a CCA program in the borough.
Councilor Hicks makes a motion that we answer into the memor- memorandum of understanding with Jewel Community Power. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Deputy Mayor Landis, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay, the motion carries. Thank you, thank you, uh Councilor Hicks for bringing that forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Next item, uh I move that council direct the borough solicitor to draft and advertise amendments to the Carlisle zoning ordinance and subdivision and land development ordinance in chapter two five five and chapter two two six, respectively, in accordance with Pennsylvania Municipality's Planning Code. That should provide for and define certain residential uses.
Councilor Hicks moved that we direct borough solicitor to draft and advertise amendments to the Carlisle zoning ordinance and subdivision land development ordinance, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Deputy Mayor Landis, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay, the motion carries.
And lastly, um and again, the second and third items are are work that has um been going on with the Land Use Reform Subcommittee and been briefed recently to council. The last item is I move that uh council direct borough solicitor to draft and advertise amendments to the Carlisle zoning ordinance with respect to conditional reduction of parking requirements and providing a fee applicable to reduction of parking when approved by borough council.
Councilor Hicks makes a motion to direct the borough solicitor to draft and advertise amendments to the zoning ordinance with respect to reduction of parking requirements and providing a fee applicable to the reduction of parking. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Deputy Mayor, I'm sure it's exuberant second on those on parking. Any any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay, and the motion carries.
Good work, everyone. That completes my report.
Thank you, Councilor Hicks. Next, uh there's no new business, but it's another opportunity for anyone who would like to be heard on any matters of borough government. Is there anybody here who would like to be heard?
So I'm Megan Nesbit at five oh three North Hanover Street, a familiar address. I don't usually attend these meetings because I get everything sort of direct. But I I do want to say I came to hear the, I what I consider very important agenda items tonight. With the regards to the CCA, I used to do all of our research for PA Power Switch, and it is a lot. Every three to six to nine months, doing the research during the switch, it was always cheaper by a lot than the default rate, and I'm, I think this is an amazing opportunity for us to make it more affordable, to meet our sustainability goals, and not just sustainability in terms of greenhouse gas emissions, but in terms of the community sustainability and for lower income households to have access to lower rates. So I'm very excited about y'all doing that. I'm also very excited about what's gonna happen with the cooperation with the Dickinson Law, ADI. So um again, that feels like it meshes with sustainability goals in terms of community, not just in terms of the environmental concern. So very much want to express my appreciation for y'all putting these forward, and yeah, that's just a comment and support.
Thank you. Any others? And anyone by Zoom? Okay, um then reports from council members and staff, we're gonna go this way this time. We'll we'll circle back to the borough, well, does borough manager have any anything for us? Okay, Council Perry, Councilor Hicks.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, just one thing, um thematic maybe for tonight. I wanna appreciate um the work that our Delta uh grant writing group did, Christian Mina's in in particular, but also Jared and our um partners in Harrisburg. We we uh did, Dennis referenced many of the grants that are available through the bipartisan infrastructure law and also through the Inflation Reduction Act, but this is one we're we were targeting, there are no matching funds. It was twenty seven million dollar grant that you all authorized us to do. It was it was a lot of work, I think it'll be worth it, I I actually like our chances to get at least some of the funding, but um I do appreciate um you all supporting us writing that grant. I I think it's it's a compelling argument, and I hope in a few weeks to come back and say we have twenty seven million dollars um to allocate to meet more of our climate goals, so thank you, that's that's all I have.
Thank you, that's that's all you have. Deputy Mayor, no, Councilor Stewie.
I'll just note that I had the opportunity to attend the um meeting that uh Public Comment at the beginning of the meeting referenced um last night with the Eastside Neighbors Association, public forum on the proposed traffic calming measures along Bedford Street and East Street that was discussed before council a number of months ago. Uh there were a lot of people in attendance, a lot of people very passionate about um, you know, their their views as to what should and shouldn't be included. And I believe, you know, in probably June, um the engineers from Dogwood will be coming back before us to, you know, provide further information based on that feedback as well as sharing some of that feedback. So just wanted to relay that along to those of you who aren't able to attend.
Okay, Councilor Mallon, Councilor Rose.
After missing the first couple of Parks and Rec Department meetings, apologies, I was out of town. I finally had the opportunity to go last week and um spoke to some very impassioned people about all things park and rec. Uh a couple of things to note that uh there are a number of different punch items left on the Lot D uh list, so those should be done sometime in May uh with a soft opening once those things are done, and then a big grand opening later this summer. The Story Forest is well underway and should be installed in May. And, oh, the Summer Basketball League is going to be happening in Memorial Park with a grand championship on July twenty seventh, so be there, Ruby Square. And Arbor Day is fast approaching, it's April twenty fourth, they're gonna be planting a couple of trees with some members of the Carlisle High School, um they're gonna plant two shake trees. And the last thing is uh if you or a teen or a youth are looking for summer employment, the pool is looking for pool attendants, lifeguards, and summer day camp counselors. The pool will be open in May till August, and it's a great way for youths in Carlisle to earn some extra money. That's it.
And before I get to Mr. Powers, I'll I'll note a couple of things that um that continue to to move move forward. Yesterday morning, uh I I met for the first time with our co-responder uh committee, and it was the first meeting that our co-responder was able to to attend. Had very thoughtful discussion, and that the committee's doing doing excellent work um to make sure that 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 program is a success. We also today had a our our monthly meeting that we have, and and Council Perry and Borough Manager and Andrew Kraus were at the meeting uh for the Lincoln Cemetery in our continued effort uh to to honor those who who were buried there and to fulfill our our apology and our our promise that that we we made by resolution, so. Mr. Powers, the final word, and the floor is yours.
Thank you so much. I just wanna say to the citizens, borough staff, and council members, I cannot believe it's been almost two years that I've been here on council. This year marks the twenty-third year of having student ambassadors here. I'm honored to be one of the uh for one of these for two of these years. I hope I lived up to the motto, excellence in community service. I've always had an interest in municipal government and law. However, once I thought I'd graduate from law school, that I would be certain that I would be in some big law zoning job. This opportunity taught me that I actually love municipal government possibly more than even a big law job. From dressing as the Pink Panther on Halloween night and getting yelled at, why do the borough trash bags cost so much? To driving into serious conversation about PFAS, everything fascinated me and made me more intrigued. I realized that I want to give back and stand for Colorado's model again, excellence in community service. Color allowed me firsthand into the Land Use Subform Committee to figure out complex issues with our housing crisis and dive firsthand into topics like shared parking, fee and looting parking, and my personal favorite, ADUs. I personally wanna thank Jared for dealing with me for all that time. Moreover, I would like to thank staff, especially Stephanie Taylor, for always laughing with me before and after meetings. I also wanna thank Susan Armstrong, she's the oil to this well-run machine. She is the definition of a great borough manager. You are lucky to have such a great inspiration and have been a personal inspiration inspiration to me. For council, I would like to thank council, all the council members. I especially like to thank Councilor Mellon and Ruth for being my side neighbors. You've always made me feel welcome at all meetings. Lastly, I would like to thank my Dickinson representatives, Anne and the Ice. It is, it's a, it's great to have another great institution represented here on council and someone with her age and passion for municipal government. Lastly, I would like to thank the citizens of Carlisle. You are the ones who make this a strong town that we really are. It has really been a blast, and I'll always remember the opportunity that I had, thank you so much.
I said it was the final word, but thank thank you, Mr. Powers. It's been a pleasure having you here for these past two years. Your your excitement for municipal law is. Your, your excitement for municipal law is, is rare, and but it's, it's important because these are important issues that we, we delve into and greatly appreciate it. And I'll, I'll open it up to anybody else who would like to make some comments.
Brett, you, you exemplify, like, more so than, than I, I've ever seen before, why we have an ambassador here. We both benefited. Your eyes were open to challenges, interesting aspects of working at local government, and we benefited from, from your knowledge as, you know, potential solicitor. And yeah, I really appreciate your engagement, your being proactive, and we want more of you here because we need it, we both need it. So thank you for your time. We're going to miss you a lot.
And your eagerness will be missed, like the, I know that you're listening, and that's, there's something really great about just when people are here to speak, like that they know that someone is listening and you're, you're, you're nodding is, is noticed and it's welcome and it's, it's a joy and it's been a pleasure. And, and, and you've, you've jumped right into our land use reform and brought some really great ideas. And, and, and we're, we will, we will shepherd the EDU through and think of you.
Yeah, Counselor Suri. Mallon?
Yeah, I, the eagerness or the exuberance with which you have greeted all of our meetings. It's been, it's been a pleasure to sit down here next to you and, and hear your interpretation and just hear your passion for this. So I really hope that you keep us posted where you end up because we would love to watch your career.
Yeah, I think I'm, you know, just echoing everybody else's comments. Unfortunately, I sit a little further from you now than I did the end of last year. So, you know, that's a bummer. You know, a lot of people in the role could obviously just come to these meetings, just say, here's what's going on at Dickinson Law School and then leave. And I feel like that's never really been the case with you. Obviously, you keep us up to date, but you've also been really engaged in the things we're discussing here. And as everybody's mentioned, really passionate about that, and I just think that's been excellent. It's really been a pleasure to get to know you and, and, you know, get to have you here with us on council, and I, I think we'll definitely miss you.
I just want to say, I think you're very kind. I mean, I want to say more than just, you know, your enthusiasm and all of that. You're very kind. You and I started somewhere around the same time. It's been two years for me also. And right from the door, you were very kind, you know, your conversation and talking to us all. It does show your interest, but that lets us all know that you're not just sitting here to be sitting here. You want to be involved, you want to learn, and that is what's important. This work is important in our communities. And so it's really good to see young people be so enthused and so involved. And you are a very kind young man, and so we will miss you and, and thank you. Thank you so much.
I'll just chime here at the end. It's been so lovely as a newly elected official to be able to sit next to you as I knew you first as a friend. And so thank you for being so kind and welcoming and educational as I've gotten my feet here at Borough Council. Thanks.
You will have left a mark here, Brent, thank you. And, and I'll be there at commencement, and so if you hear a holler from your right when you, it's just might be from the mayor, so thank you, thank you, Brent. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.